To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his fold, liberty and justice for all.
Roke, Alderman Tilvin, Alderman Jean Francois, Alderman Johnson, Alderwoman Ray, Alderman Kleiner, Alderman Green, Alderman Witt, Alderman Massey, President Rodriguez. Quorum is present.
Approval of minutes?
We have June 3rd, 17th, and August 4th.
A motion by Mr. Massey to approve all, seconded by Alderman Witt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
The good of the city. Call up the mayor for a special recognition.
Hi, good evening, everyone. You know, we have been recognizing some of our long-term businesses in our community, and we also started to look at community partners, people who have stood out in our community and have made it extra special. So tonight, on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Department, we had a strong recommendation from Rayland, our supervisor, our superintendent, and Nicole, the deputy superintendent, that they would like Neta Macri, who is the owner of Strawberry Fields Ice Cream located just inside the Davage Park area, for her generosity and dedication to our city's youth. And that's not just for owning an ice cream stand. This is for Neta first approached the Recreation Department of June of 2024 with a genuine desire to collaborate and create opportunities for children. In 2024, she sponsored a pop-up Storytime event donating ice cream for, an ice cream bar for all of the attendees. She has partnered with our playground program every Friday, personally providing juice icies to every participant, and something she continued to do through this summer. In 2025, she launched an initiative, an innovative bathing suit drive in collaboration with the Recreation Department. Donors of a new bathing suit receive a free ice cream at Strawberry Fields and a free entry into one of the city pools. So this program ensures that every child can enjoy our pool safely and comfortably. So Neta's efforts have provided countless moments of joy for our children and our community. They have strengthened connections between local businesses and community and have expanded opportunities for many Middletown families. So for this, we are very deeply grateful and upon the recommendation of our Parks and Recreation Department and their staff, that Neta truly represents what it means to be a community partner. So on behalf of myself, the common council, and the city of Middletown, we have a certificate of recognition presented by the city of Middletown to Neta Macri for outstanding dedication, generosity, and contributions to the youth of our community, signed by myself and the council president, and we would also like to present to her a key to the city. Neta, could you please come up and have a chance to say a few words for us?
Tremendous. Thank you, Mayor Di Stefano, and thank you, council. We started Strawberry Fields two years ago, myself, my partner, Anthony Oskalis, and the truth is, we give away more ice cream than we sell. But the reality is, there's so many happy, eager kids that come up to the window, and all of you would probably do the exact same thing. Now, I'm a Middletown local, born and raised, and I grew up playing in Davage Park. I remember ice skating on the pond, climbing that giant metal white castle, if anybody knows it. Yeah, I actually had the chance to, it is still there, and I had the chance to play with it on my nieces just this past summer. It's been tremendous. And so, the park has come a long way in so many years, and of course, so much of that credit can go to the city of Middletown. But today, I'd like to recognize the Park Department, specifically the superintendent, Rayland Berthoff, Nicole Sarkis, and their entire team. They truly do so much at Davage Park, whether it's the free lunch programs in the summertime, the storytimes, the pool, the pad, that back-to-school backpack program. Every time I've approached them, they've always said yes, made it very easy to work with them, and made it so much fun, really enjoyed it. And so, as a small business owner, collaborating with them has just been a joy and an ease. So I encourage other small business owners, if you're watching, if you're here, to reach out to work with the Parks Department, to find initiatives that you can partner with on, with them on, and to give to the kids in the community. It's very rewarding, and not just because you get a key to the city to do it, candidly, but because you get a lot of thank yous, and you get a lot of smiles, and you know that in those moments, you're contributing to making very sweet memories for kids in this community. So, thank you. On a personal note, just briefly, our family has been in Middletown for many, many years, my goodness. If you know that Davage Park area, we owned a small family eatery called Geno's. My grandpa, yeah, folks have probably been there. Opened in 1970, closed doors in 2020 because of COVID, but that was 50 years of business in town. My grandparents started the business, and they worked side by side until they passed. Our family took it over. And so, we'd like to accept today's award and key to the city in honor of them, and then specifically for my nana, who I know, and if you ever met her, you can say with certainty, also gave away more than she sold. Thank you very much for this tremendous honor.
Thank you.
Dave Madden. Dave Madden. Good evening, council and Mayor Di Stefano.
What kind of list of good stuff?
My name is Dave Madden, and I am the director of the annual Run For Downtown, which was this past Saturday, and I'm up here to give a big thanks. A thanks to the mayor, a thanks to all of you in the council, and I got in notes here, and I'm still gonna probably miss people. Thanks to the police department, the fire department, DPW, Parks Department, BID, the volunteer groups, Middletown High School, National Honor Society, NJROTC, the girls' volleyball team, they were monitoring water stations, the runners who showed up, the walkers who showed up. We had record numbers of participants, we had record numbers of finishers, we had record numbers of people downtown for the post-race party. This was an amazing, amazing day. We had 20 restaurants participating in what we call this year Flavors Without Borders Taste of Downtown, which was spectacular. The response we've gotten from the community, from the participants, from the volunteers, from the restaurant owners themselves, has been second to none. I'm proud to say that we've gotten some bids. I know that the city was looking to make some improvements to Thrall Park. We've got some bids in, and it looks like the Run For Downtown this year will be able to contribute enough money to uplight all the statues at the corner of Wickham and Grove, add an extra sidewalk in there, bring power to those lights, and we're just super excited. Next year will be 20 years for us, it's August 15th, 2026, and we are really, really pumped. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Remarks to the mayor?
Yes, I'd like to begin with a comment about the governor's trip last week into the city of Middletown. Last week, we had the privilege of touring the downtown with Governor Hochul. The governor was interested in seeing firsthand the improvements that were made possible by the $10 million DRI funding, that she was instrumental in implementing the program way back in 2016, when she was lieutenant governor, and then, of course, finally getting the program in full swing when she became governor. So that $10 million became tens of millions of dollars leveraged into other programs. But on this walk, the governor, we showcased projects that included redevelopment properties, new businesses, enhanced streetscapes, improved infrastructure, all part of our downtown revitalization strategy. I had the opportunity to meet privately also with the governor, Governor Hochul, to discuss future city needs and priorities, and as you know, these are the types of meetings where we have had great success in the past with the governor in regards to the grant programs and the success that we've had with many grant programs. The governor is very respectful to the needs of the city and very responsive over the years, and we're hoping that that will continue as we move forward in the future here. So I did thank her for her ongoing support of city government, our city residents and her commitment to strengthening communities like ours. We were joined on the tour by Assemblywoman Paula Kay alongside Council President Rodriguez, and demonstrating that partnership on all levels of government and how government is supposed to work. So the visit reaffirmed that our investments are paying off. The governor was impressed by the maintenance that was done on the investments. As you know, we put quite a bit of money into trees and landscaping, previous pavement, parking lots, sidewalks, the crosswalks, and was very impressed by all of that and the fact that it's being maintained, and noted that not every department, not every community does that. And so, it reaffirmed those investments and reaffirmed that they are paying off and that so with the governor's support, it gives us confidence that Middletown will remain a leader in the revitalization and economic growth in the Hudson Valley of our downtown, and we hope that we'll have great, much more success moving forward as the other programs that we've applied for. As you know, we've applied for a $20 million grant for new sidewalks that will extend beyond the downtown. We began that program last year, we got on Lake Avenue, Dulson Avenue. We have done many, many intersections in the city, we're making them handicap accessible. Without funding from state and federal agencies, we would not be able to afford to do all those things. So the infrastructure improvements in the city of Middletown alone, just the one program was $31 million, most of it grant-funded. The $10 million was outside of that and entirely grant-funded, so we're very happy with the progress that we've made, and the governor did have an opportunity to see that firsthand. Had the opportunity to meet many small business people also, Rakesh, and you can see Juan from the Taco Factory, and all have very nice things to say about the city, how it's, how the downtown is bouncing back after many, many years. So I want to thank her for her visit, and we did welcome her back, and hopefully she'll make, take us up on that in the very near future. Dave did talk about the Run For Downtown, and it's not just the one day, it's the, they call it the Rock and Roll Weekend, Run Weekend. We did estimate about 3,500 people downtown, and I know that between the runners and the walkers, I think that's a pretty accurate number. And I know Dave doesn't pat himself on the back often, but, no, he does. But not on this case, on other things. But Dave and Anna really deserve a lot of the credit, or all the credit, and they share that credit with all of their volunteers, as Dave stated. The race volunteers are an important part of the success of the race, but without Piccolos and Dave and Anna Madden coordinating this, I don't think it would be even happen, let alone the success that it's been and the growth that it's had. So that, Dave did mention all the city agencies, police, fire, DPW, parks, volunteers, BID District, Maria Bruni and her, and her team, so I wanted to also publicly thank all of them that were involved in the, in the race and the operation. You know, the run does continue to be both a community tradition and a driver of also our downtown revitalization. All these little pockets, all these little things that are happening, are happening for a reason with one goal in mind, and that is to bring back our community and restore our city to what it once was, and I think we're there. You know, we have a campaign that we've started now, Discover Middletown, but in some cases, it's also Rediscover Middletown with people who used to live here, or people that still live here in this community that for one reason or another do not venture into downtown Middletown. So we're hoping that that campaign continues. Events like this are a big part of bringing people back downtown, and when they get here, they're very surprised, so we hope that they'll continue to patronize businesses, continue to go to events at the Paramount Theater, enjoy one of the free concerts on Thursday or Friday nights throughout the summer, all those good things that happen as a result of events such as this. So also, the, I wanted to address one thing, the chief did tell me that we did get quite a few calls, more so than ever, on people who are a little frustrated by the street closings and the fact that they can't pull out of the driveway when the race is going on. That's for a reason. It's a, it's an hour or two of inconvenience, I understand, but once the race course is closed, nobody can go into the course, and that's for safety reasons. Even if Alderman Massey pulled up to a, one of the, the entries into the racetrack, they would not let him in. I would not let him in for other reasons, but they would not let him in for safety reasons. So we, we try to keep the race as, the runners and the volunteers as safe as possible, that's the reason. I understand that some of you are frustrated by that, but you know, we do know the dates a year in advance. It's the same date, or the same, same Saturday in August, the third Saturday in August every single year, so you can plan accordingly. If you have to park your car around the corner, maybe, that might help, but the bottom line is that next year is the 20th. We're gonna have the race again in, in August, I think it's August 15th of 2020, so that we'll have a opportunity to plan ahead and make sure that you're able to get out of your driveways or do whatever is necessary. So I wanted to just address those issues on a positive note. And then, out of one concern, which has really caught on with Spectrum Media, News 12 and others, is just an unfortunate incident that happened at Middletown Lanes. I know some of you have asked, I did put up an extensive social media post regarding it. It was at Quinn's Pins in Middletown Lanes. And just one point of interest is that the bowling alley does remain open. It is, they continue to operate as a bowling alley, but alcohol sales are suspended until the liquor issue, liquor license issue is resolved. The city has their permit, to business permit, on hold because we cannot issue a business permit for the district bar, who was operating the bar that, this past week. And that can't be done until we can determine, determine who the legal operator is and a proper compliance with New York state laws demonstrated. Just some clarifications on, on policies. We don't normally come up here and talk about incidents, especially with small businesses, but this has really taken a hold on social media, so I felt it was important that I put up a clarification on social media and also address the council and the public. It's important because the public interest in accurate claims are being circulated. So the Quinn's, Quinn's Pin ownership is publicly disputed, the police reports, and the chief and I both stand behind those reports on accuracy. And the reason why we stand behind them, maybe for different reasons, but I'll let the chief speak for himself if he would like to address it, but that's, that'll be up to him. But the version of events that are in the report are supported by body cam footage, which confirms both the number of people involved and the statements made during and after the incident. This evidence, along with lease documents provided to the city, have been forwarded to the New York State Liquor Authority. The operator of the bar, of the district bar, provided a lease to the fire inspector stating that they were leasing the liquor license of Quinn's Pins. Now, anyone who's familiar with liquor laws in New York State knows that is a fatal flaw, as described by the New York State Liquor Authority, that anyone who has applied for a license understands that upfront. It is possibly a fatal flaw, and that could result in revocation. I did not lease the bar to the district. Quinn's Pins leased the bar illegally to the district. Quinn's Pins owner told the fire inspector or the police that they leased the bar to the district, the district meaning the two operators who are running the bar. So that is an important part to remember. They did not get their permit, has not been issued, not because of the fight. We understand clearly that fights happen at bars. Has nothing to do with the fight. That's a separate issue that the Liquor Authority will resolve. They have a process for handling unruly establishments. Usually, they don't result in, in much of anything unless it's a continued pattern. Admittedly, this not, there has not been a pattern of large fights at the bowling alley, but in this case, there was a large fight, and I think to lie about it will only dig a deeper hole for them when they get to their hearing, but that's their business and they can advert, and they can operate on advice of council. But, and that's a long-term, a short-term and a long-term issue for them. The short-term issue at that bowling alley that night, which required immediate action by the Middletown Fire Department, was the second means of egress from the bar area was barricaded. So you had a establishment with two means of egress, which are required for the capacity of the bar, and one of them was barricaded, intentionally barricaded, so all people had to funnel out of one exit. Imagine if there was a problem inside the bar, a fire, or any, any other type of incident that required immediate evacuation. You've seen it on television, you've seen it in other places, and you know, and you say, how the hell can that happen? Where were the city inspectors? Where was this? Well, they were there, and that's one of the reasons why it got shot down. By creating that situation of closing the second means of egress, they created an overcrowding situation because that would reduce the capacity of the bar area to 49 patrons. There are estimated to be about 150 people in the establishment. So I already addressed the illegal subleasing of the liquor license, and, and that is under New York state law. That is not a city law, and that's not something that the police went there looking for. The police went there responding to the fight, and all of these other issues came as a result of the fight. So there are other issues in the lease that was presented to the city that are red flags and conflict with city zoning requirements, such as permission to have a hookah lounge, which is not permitted under our zoning. In, in that case, it's not a part of their planning board approval. So there are other issues related to the operation of Quinn's Pins that need to be addressed. But the biggest issue they have, and the biggest problem they have, will be with the New York State Liquor Authority, not the city of Middletown. The local issues can be rectified with a clear, as our legal counsel said, by voiding of this illegal lease, by having a clear ownership person who the, can be held accountable and responsible if something goes wrong there. You know, there are health department permits that are there, they are serving food there, they're serving liquor there, alcohol, beer, and, and it's, it's a business operation, and someone has to be accountable for the operation of every business in any community, not just Middletown. On a positive note, Quinn's Pins has been a part of Middletown's downtown community and our city for many years, and is an important business to our community. It does bring a lot of people into our community, into our downtown, and I was concerned by some of the comments that came out of Mr. Quinn's, some of the comments made by Mr. Quinn, but I understand also that that might be due to frustration of the mistakes that apparently they made, and if they made them on the advice of legal counsel, he should probably seek another legal counsel to review what his lawyer told him or didn't tell him. But I can stand here before you, the city residents and the common council, and tell you that it is absolutely illegal to sublet or to lease your liquor license to any person. A liquor license requires an extensive background check, it requires a whole process and procedure before the state issues that, and is not a right that you can just assign to anyone or sell to anyone at any time you want. So my position is very clear, I want Quinn's Pins to succeed, I would like them to reopen at full capacity, but they must follow the rules and they must follow the, meet the legal obligations as a licensee of a liquor license under New York state liquor laws. We know that public safety has to be first, that situation was easily rectified by the reopening of the barn doors that were the second means of egress. There were some other fire issues that I know our fire inspector Mike Watery is working on, but their problem, as I said, is not so much here with the city of Middletown, their bigger problem is with the New York State Liquor Authority. And neither myself, the common council, the police chief, none of us have the legal authority to revoke a liquor license. That is the sole discretion of the New York State Liquor Authority. So the next steps must be, the unlawful lease must be canceled, Quinn's Pins must demonstrate that that lease has been canceled and provide proof to our city attorney, and they must demonstrate compliance with state law. The SLA will determine the penalties and future licensing status of Quinn's Pins, but once resolved of the local issues, they will be, the city will then reconsider issuing their local business permit, which will then allow them to reopen their business. So the bottom line is that it was a serious breach of state liquor law, a very serious breach of public safety standards. I want to compliment the Middletown Police Department for their quick response there and their reaction to what happened, and also to thank Fire Inspector Mike Watery and the Fire Department and the fire chiefs for their review and quick review that potentially saved lives if there was, those doors were barricaded and they did happen to have a fire. So I think the process worked, the system worked, and now hopefully Quinn's Pins will do the right thing and own up to the mistake, but more importantly, make the corrections that are necessary and get reopened fully for business very soon. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Any questions for the mayor, Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I want to go back to something more positive. In the Run For Downtown, also wanted to thank Marshall Sterling, Marshall and Sterling, because I think that they were a sponsor again this year.
They were the prime sponsor, yeah, there were many sponsors. They were the, they were the, the big sponsor.
Yes.
Yes, they were. And that's why they call it the Marshall Sterling Middletown Run For Downtown.
Run For Downtown, okay.
Thank you, though.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, mayor. Okay, remarks of department heads, economic development?
Looking for your support on some items on the agenda, and a couple of them are from the county of Orange. There's a grant we received from Orange County Tourism for $4,999, and that went towards a Run For Downtown, Rock Roll Run Weekend. So that money helped with the promotions of the concerts, the race, but also, we were able to send out 14,000 postcards in our community, they were mailed to households to promote the race, but also put the map on the race to show folks, you know, the route of the race. So thanks to Orange County Tourism, County of Orange, County Executive New House for that grant, and also, we received a municipal grant from the county of Orange for the same amount, $4,999, that will go towards the purchase of two decorative benches and a litter can for Thrall Park. So that will go towards that project at Thrall Park. Another grant we received was from Senator Scoofus in the amount of $10,000 for the Middletown Barbecue and Resource Fair Day, September 20th. So I'm looking for support tonight on those three grants, and besides that, that's a thank you to Anna and Dave and everybody involved with running for downtown. It was just an amazing weekend, and that's all I have.
Any question for Maria? Great job, Maria.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
Tonight, I think we have a resolution that you guys are gonna pass for 14 new members. It's, that's a big number for us for one month, but it's exciting, a lot of the high schoolers, it's starting to become a snowball effect. We got a couple of members from the high school that joined, and then it was the Tell a Friend. And hopefully, we keep 75%. You know, that's a, that's a high goal, but hopefully, we can, and it keeps going this route, because some of the, you know, some of the manpower and some of the companies are a little low, and, and we need to get them back up to top speed. We did have a second alarm fire this month up at the old powerhouse, 917 Ashley Avenue, and I just received the fire report that it's incendiary. It was set, the arson dog didn't sit, so they had no accelerants, but I believe there was someone living up in the old control room that might have dropped something, or a lighter, or cigarette, or something that started the fire. It looked a lot worse on arrival, big building, smoke coming from every floor, so we transmitted the second alarm to get more manpower there, and then I want to thank Slay Hill Fire Department for showing up with their fast team and the standby companies that showed up into the city to cover the city while we were up at the fire. July was the hottest month for us, but we did 104 calls, which July was the hottest month for us, but we did a hundred and four calls, which is kind of busy for us. I shouldn't say kind of busy, it's real busy for us. And then August, as of right now, we're at sixty-two for the month. So these new members, got to get, got to get them in, got to get them trained, and get them outfitted with the gear, and they can get on the streets. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the fire chief? Alderman?
Thank you, chief. Just for anyone who may be watching, did these new firefighters get assigned a company, or are they choosing a company?
It really, it depends on if they come with a company in mind. If they don't, we actually have, it's not really a formal committee, but we do have guys that walk them around every apparatus, all three firehouses. They kind of show them the trucks. If you want to be an engine company or a truck company, or you want to do some rescue and EMS, we show them all that. If they come, you know, if they come with that, we send them to that company. We forward, after Andrew does the background check, we forward the information to that company so they can accept. If they don't, we try to, if they're not afraid of heights, we try to give them to a truck company. You know, if they're, if they're afraid of heights, we try to find an engine company that's a little low in manpower, and we send them to them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, chief. Police chief?
Since our last meeting, the only real event that we had was Night Out Against Crime, so I appreciate all the support. We had a great turnout, beautiful night, probably one of the best nights that we've had for that event in a long time. We weren't threatening with rain or anything like that, but we appreciate all the support. Other than that, I emailed you all the other concerns that have gone on over the last couple of weeks, and if you have any questions or concerns.
Any question, Alderman?
Thank you, chief. Just something that's come up in our ward, but also I've seen it on social media about solicitation with, like, I know specifically Frontier has been, you know, knocking or claiming to be Frontier, and at my house, one person had identification, one didn't. Like, what are the rules that you can share about who can knock on doors in those situations? If you could help with that, that'd be awesome.
So for door-to-door solicitation, you need a city permit. You have to file with the clerk. Mr. McCormick gives us information of who has active permits. We've advised, because of the Frontier situation, we advised our staff that they didn't have a permit at the time. I don't know if they do at this point, but going back a couple of weeks, they did not. So we encourage people, if they're unsure, they could call the police department. We're able to come up, interview them, get information, and make sure that they have the proper permits, and make sure that they're actually from that organization and that they're not just out there trying to scam people. But please call, encourage people to call us.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. VPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. We'll start with Alderman, Massey. The reservoirs are at ninety percent full. Obviously, we're having some dry weather. Last month, just to know what the numbers are, July as an example, the average monthly for July is about five and a half inches per month. We only had 1.6 inches. In August this month, we only had, so far, 3.6 inches, but most of it happened in one day, in August, in August 1st, which is not good for us, for all the rain to come down all at once and then dry the whole month. So it's basically two dry months. It's, that's why we're down to ninety percent, but we are within an average, annual average, our storage, we're in very good shape, but as usual, we take the necessary steps to start setting up for skimming operations from the auxiliary or supplemental water sources that we have. Capital projects, I'm just going to run through them. If you have any questions, please stop me or ask me about them at the end of this segment of my presentation. Parking garage moving on very well. Orange and Rockland is doing the wires, rerouting. After that, the GC will jump in, he's very anxious to jump in. Court is moving very, court project is moving well. Traffic operation is winding down, doing some touch-up and punchless items. Design for the low-pressure water line from the water treatment plant down to Monhegan Avenue is ongoing. Design for the water, raw water lines from Shuangang over to Kenji, Phase One only, partially, halfway through, basically, it's ongoing as well. Before you, there is a resolution tonight to award the bids for replacing the water department garage and the street department garage, so we would appreciate your support for that award. Now, I just rushed through this so that I can focus, just to carry on what the mayor was saying about the governor and the help from the state, and I just want to call out in particular Congressman Ryan, Pat Ryan, because he just, I shared with you an award that we just had for a million dollar from the EPA. That's a million dollar towards the raw water line infrastructure, and that goes back to the 2024 round of EPA and earmarks and congressional, congressional, basically federal government appropriating the fund. So he gave us three and a half million dollars before and a million dollar now, and he has us on the list for another million dollar for the same raw water line for Phase Two, and that's for 2026, so we're waiting for Congress to vote on it. So, I mean, this congressman has been tremendous for us with all the money he's providing for us with his office. They're really focused on the infrastructure, and the water mains that nobody sees, everybody opens, expects to open the faucet and see water coming out. Doesn't matter, you know, they don't care, not they don't care, of course they care, but they want to make sure that the water is coming out. But some of the water mains in the ground, they are, they go back to nineteen, I'm sorry, 1887, in Lake Avenue as an example. Some of our raw water, finished water line, raw water line, meaning before the water is treated, that's what raw water line is, coming from the reservoirs all the way to the water treatment plant, that's miles and miles away from the city. It's all 1900, go back to 1900 water lines. So Congressman Ryan, with the support of the mayor, support of Senator Scoofus, and Assemblywoman Kay, with their letters of support to the federal government, to the EPA, supporting Congressman Ryan, has been tremendous help. And for that, I just wanted to call Congressman out, you know, along with what the mayor said about the governor, he's been tremendous asset to us, supporting us throughout. With that, I will conclude. If you have any questions about any of the projects or the grant awards, let me know, otherwise I will conclude.
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Just want to start by thanking Anna and Dave Madden. My daughter and wife ran the race this past Saturday, and it was incredible. The medal that my seven-year-old got is, she is so proud, and for her to complete four miles is a major accomplishment, and she's excited to start doing this every year, so thank you. To Neda and her family, thank you for all that you do. Just like Neda, I grew up in Davage Park, we grew up playing, and grew up going to Geno's as well, so we are so happy to partner with Neda and bring the free ice cream to the children, and the bathing suits was an awesome touch for the summer. It's unfortunate that we do have to turn a lot of families away at the pools for not having proper swimwear, so offering that opportunity to collect bathing suits and for us to hand out to the kids who do get turned away was a great touch, and we are truly appreciative of that. So far, we, summer, we've completed Little People Playtime in our sports camp. Just to give a brief rundown of our numbers for camps this summer. Week one at Little People Playtime, which is held in our building, we had twenty-six. Week two, thirty-five. Week three, thirty-three. Week four, thirty-two. Week five, thirty-three. And week six, twenty-six. Those numbers may seem low, but it's Little People Playtime, so it's four, five, and six-year-olds, so that is a lot of four, five, and six-year-olds. So total duplicated, one hundred and eighty-seven kids throughout the summer, four, five, and six. Sports camp, week one, seventy-five. Week two, one hundred and eleven. Week three, one hundred and thirty-two. Week four, one hundred and twenty-two. Week five, one hundred and twenty-two. And week six, one hundred and thirteen. Total duplicated, six hundred and seventy-five. Would definitely like to thank Amy Creden and the Alard City School District of Middletown for giving us the opportunity to be housed in Monhegan Middle School again this summer. It's a complete game changer, being able to be inside and have access to different areas throughout the school building, and the amazing facilities that they have outside is so incredible. So thank you, Amy Creden and staff. Lauren Burr and Food Services. If you don't know, when we are able to be in the school, sign your kid up for camp, because they are getting a hot breakfast and a hot lunch every single day, served from Food Services. The kids eat good there. They had baked barbecue chicken one day, and the kids had it all over their face. They were so happy with their meals that they got every single day, and it's all free of charge, thanks to Lauren Burr and her Food Services and everything that they do, so thank you. We have one week left of pools and one week left of playgrounds. Once those complete, a meeting in September, I will have some numbers and estimates for you for those. Playground, we are looking to revamp those for next, next summer. We're working with Food Services now, want to make sure that we are still giving the free lunches out to the kids, but if you've been around to the parks during the day, it is like a ghost town. The kids are not coming out at all. We're paying counselors to be there. They have ideas, they are, they want to work, they want to do activities with the kids, but they're just not coming out anymore. Last summer, we revamped it again and tried to do mobile and like pop-up things. Not that it was a complete bust, but the numbers are just so, still so incredibly low. But we're looking, if everything goes according to plan, applying for the grant funding with the youth bureau and getting, still getting funding for that, but also working with Food Services to hopefully have two evening sites later in the day. Maybe it's the heat that's keeping them in, so we're working with Lauren Burr and Food Services to possibly offer dinner meals at two sites and have counselors there late afternoon into early evening, and having our two playground sites at the, our two pool areas, Sproch Street and Davage, and serving the meals right at the pools with counselors there to do activities with the kids. So hopefully, being at a pool site will increase our pool numbers and also increase the amount of lunches that we're giving out and the amount of kids that we're able to serve. Any questions?
Any questions? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. We have a resolution, I don't know that it specifies it, but to name the new mountain bike trail, Lakeside Burner, so I just wanted you to mention Ryan and...
Oh, yes, Ryan Yastika, who was recognized at our Recreation Commission. He has done an incredible job, and he has that can't stop, won't stop when it comes to those reservoir mountain bike trails. There was a typo on that, I'm not sure if it was corrected, is only .5 miles?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. But Ryan, he's just continuous, continuing to create new trails. I'm working now to try and get our trails updated with the help of Maria Bruni, updated on the trail maps, so when visitors are coming, we can get new maps out of the reservoir trails that highlight all the new mountain bike trails indicated by a specific color, distinguishing from the hiking trails to mountain biking trails. But thank you, Ryan. He's done an incredible job, his crew, and he's, he can't stop, he's addicted to it. So thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Alderman.
All right, anyone else? Thank you, Ray Lynn. City clerk?
Good evening. Just a reminder to the community, a citywide yard sale is just a few weeks away, September 13th. We still have some select spots open at Eryway Park Pavilion. You can sign up through the website, we're looking forward to it. Hopefully, the weather will be on our side this time. Just in response to Alderman Witt's comments about Frontier, all the solicitors that come into the city of Middletown get permitted through the office of the clerk. We run background checks on all of them. I have been in touch with Frontier since their incidents occurred, and they assured me that they will be in to fill out the paperwork, the appropriate paperwork, and pay the fees associated with it, and hopefully that'll be resolved sooner rather than later. That's it.
The clerk had somebody knock on his door, too, right?
Frontier had real bad luck. They came to my house, that's how we found out they were doing it without a permit. That's just bad luck right there.
Any questions for the clerk? All right, thank you. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you. Just quickly, part of Governor Hochul's visit to Middletown involved a stop at the Middletown School District. I was not there in this capacity. It was actually a very tight group invitation only, essentially. I was there as support staff for my job with the school district, and I just wanted, you know, I mention it because obviously if things are going well for the school district, and we've talked about it, how it affects the city in a positive way for people, and a couple of things, when she came up to the high school, she was there for an hour and fifteen minutes, I mean, in and out, and it was, she was there because she has an edict that all schools K-12 will be cellphone-free this year during the school day. And she's making these roundtable discussions, and Middletown actually was one of the first people, first people, first school districts in the state to actually do this, so it was kind of a natural stop here. And she had, she showed up and she thought she was at a college campus, the way the high school looked, so that was kind of a nice thing to hear. And her people, even when they did their walkthrough in the beginning, they wanted to try to find a place for her to have her press conference, and we showed them, well, we have this college and career center. We may have remembered how we got like a book, and that was what we have now. There's three people working there, including two guidance counselors and a financial aid person, and the people said, well, this isn't going to work because it doesn't look like a high school. So then we tried some of our collaborative spaces, and again, well, this doesn't really look like a high school. So she wanted to be looking like she was at a high school, so we found a science room with a periodic table. So that was the backdrop for the press conference. That's what they wanted, that was, that was fine, but just the, had a chance, she had a chance to ask questions and speak of our superintendent, our principal, and even three young people, one who recently graduated and two rising seniors. All three of them said that there was an adjustment period when this happened with no phones, but at the end of the day, they think it's a good thing that it happens, that there is a cell-free environment and then the way they work it there. So I just wanted to share that part of it, since we were kind of piggybacking all of it. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Green?
Yeah, quickly, just want to say a big overall thank you to everyone who has volunteered their time or volunteered food from their business. We hear such great stories from our local businesses who all give back, and those who volunteer, whether it be fire departments or for, you know, the various runs or community events that go on. Really, overall, I think the theme we've heard tonight was just, thank you. So, thanks.
Alderman Kleiner?
I also want to thank the Maddens, and the turnout was spectacular at the run for downtown. You know, there's just so much work that goes into that, so looking forward to next We had a constituents' meeting last Monday, and I want to thank Commissioner Twill, who came out and answered people's questions, and that was very helpful. Frontier, I'm not surprised, just nothing about them surprises me anymore. I also want to thank Detectives Bailey and Barone. They did a lot of work to solve a case of somebody shooting himself in the leg and then claiming that they were robbed and making up stories, so there's a lot of immediate hard work by the police department, and they did a terrific job. Also, thank Senator Scoofus for the $10,000 grant, and I want to mention that the grant, the legislative grant, $4,999, that I think Ray Lynn mentioned, that was from legislator Michael Paduk, so thank him for that. Others, I think we get to resolutions, but... Others, I think we get to resolutions, but Night Out was terrific, and I thank the Police Department and everyone involved with that. Looking forward to the barbecue next month. In Israel on Sunday, you would never know it from the American media, but there were five million people who came out to protest the war in Gaza, the genocide in Gaza, the, using hunger and starvation, and it's just horrendous. And we can only hope, as I've said, that the, in 2026, we actually have elections, and that the elections are free and fair, because right now, they're doing everything they can to change the rules. Gonna try and prevent mail-in voting. That makes it very difficult for people without easy access to getting to vote. And it's just, I, I hope people stand up and don't put up with it. I hope the courts help us. And we'll, we'll see what happens. But, you know, if, if you don't like the job reports and you don't like the reports, just fire people and put in your influencers and your loyalists and your other totally unqualified people. I would like to see local Republicans speaking up about what's going on in Washington and all the, all the really horrendous cuts. I don't hear much from local Republicans. And another hundred and fifty billion dollars to ICE is not gonna help us as a country. It's not gonna make America great again. Thank you.
Alderman Ray?
Good evening. Don't really have anything this evening. I just wanted to shout out Neta, who left already. But it really does take a village. And if we can fill our village with more people like her and her family, I think we would see amazing things happen. That's all I have tonight.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. With respect to the school district, I will admit I winced when that started with Ms. Creedon and the phones. It's not always good to be ahead of the curve. Sometimes it can be dangerous. But it certainly has stead her well. And she's been the trendsetter in a very good way. The governor came, and it's a great thing. And we look at superstructure, we look at sidewalks, we look at traffic lights, we look at windows, we look at buildings. But tonight's exemplary of the fact that Middletown is made for people, and the Maddens are exemplary of why we're happy to have people. And certainly, Neta's story, I probably gave away more than I sold. That's a quote we should all take to the bank, and thank her very much for that. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François?
Yes, good evening. I gotta say, Anna and Dave, I'm very proud of you guys. You guys are a huge asset to the city of Middletown. I happened to be in Rockland County this weekend, visited a family member, which they had family members that reside in Middletown. And all they talked about is Run for Downtown. And that made me feel real proud about what you guys do in the community. So thank you once again. Job well done. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
I would also like to thank Dave and Anna Madden for the outstanding event. It gets better and better each year. I also have colleagues that tell me, oh, it's so cool down there. It's all fun, and I see them racing. I was doing the watering station near the Lions Club, near the Salt Garage. And I'm just so proud of everybody getting out there. I got people in shape, people working on it. Everybody's proud of what they're doing, so it's a great event. Another great event was the Night for Down, Night Out Against Crime. I'd like to thank the Police Department and Chief Wauchu. It's so family-friendly, and it's, you just feel so comfortable down there. And so, great job. That's it.
New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey accepting the resignation of Thomas Murtaugh as Chairman of the Board of Electrical, Electrical Engineer Examiners.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Rope.
Tobin? Aye. Jean-François? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt confirming the mayor's appointment of Sixto Martinez to the Electrical Licensing Board.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Johnson, in discussion. Rope.
Tobin? Aye. Jean-François? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green authorizing cooperation between the city of Middletown and the Orange Ulster Bosses, the Orange Ulster Board of Cooperative Educational Services for literary class, literacy class.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin, in discussion. Rope.
Tobin? Aye. Jean-François? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing the acceptance of two handcrafted bike stands for parking lots on the reservoir trails.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Ray, in discussion. Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention they were donated by the Shop Fabrication Welding and Machinery. That's the business in Florida and New York. They'll thank you for the donations.
Anyone else? Rope.
Tobin? Aye. Jean-François? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing the naming of the new Middletown Reservoir Mountain Bike Trail.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, in discussion. Rope.
Tobin? Aye. Jean-François? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey declaring surplus equipment and authorizing the transfer in lieu of payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Rope.
Tobin? Aye. Jean-François? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing an eight-hundred-dollar budget transfer within the 2025 civil service budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, in discussion. Rope.
Tobin? Aye. Jean-François? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François declaring surplus equipment and authorizing its sale at auction.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Johnson. In discussion. Rope.
Tobin? Aye. Jean-François? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing budget transfers within the capital fund to close out completed projects.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey,